Hope you're wearing your running shoes. We have one session before the participant session. And I hope to get through the remainder of chapter three, from 3 verse 7 through the end of chapter four. Now remember what I said on Sunday? That we're not going to cover every part of the book exhaustively, that there's just not time even in a study like this to do that. So we've got to make a little progress, but we will do our best to hit the highlights of what the Lord is telling us here. Let's however, give attention to the reading of the word of God, Hebrews 3 verse 7. Hebrews 3 and 7. Therefore, as the Holy Spirit says, today if you will hear his voice, do not harden your hearts as in the rebellion, in the day of trial in the wilderness, where your fathers tested me, tried me, and saw my works forty years. Therefore, I was angry with that generation and said, they always go astray in their heart and they have not known my ways. So I swear to them in my wrath, they shall not enter my rest. Beware brethren, lest there be in any of you, an evil heart of unbelief in departing from the living God. But exhore one another daily while it is called today, lest any one of you be hardened through the deceitfulness of sin. For we have become partakers of Christ, if we hold the beginning of our confidence steadfast to the end. While it is said, today if you will hear his voice, do not harden your hearts as in the rebellion. For who have, sorry, for who having heard rebelled. Indeed, was it not all who came out of Egypt led by Moses? Now with whom was he angry forty years? Was it not with those who sinned, whose corpses fell in the wilderness? And to whom did he swear, that they would not enter his rest, but to those who did not obey? So we see that they could not enter in because of unbelief. We'll read chapter four as we go along into it. I'll just notice a very brief practical point, verse 7, in citing the scripture. It says, therefore, as the Holy Spirit says. So this is a great reminder that all scripture is given by inspiration of God. That this is the God breathed word, that it's God's word, not man's word. He may have used David in some cases, or Moses, or the different writers of the gospels and so forth. But ultimately, the author is the Holy Spirit. And so we need to remember, this carries divine authority. And he quotes from Psalm 95 here. Now we've noticed already in chapter one, the Lord Jesus has been compared to angels. And the Lord Jesus is so much better than the angels. He is superior to the angels. Then we saw how he is united to human beings. And in the wonderful grace of God, God has a great salvation, as we heard. Which is his intention to not only liberate us individually from our sins, but also to bring forth the merits and the great work of our Lord Jesus Christ, that he always intended for the whole human race, and through humanity to the whole universe. So it's a very big plan indeed, and it certainly is not exaggerating it to say it's a great salvation. Then we saw at the beginning of chapter three, the first six verses. He cites probably the greatest hero of the faith to Israel, maybe Abraham, being the only other contender. And that is Moses. And you remember that the Jews said in John 9, when the formerly blind man was talking to them? They said, we are Moses disciples. They love to identify with Moses. They said, but this man, we know not where he is from. Well, the Lord says, that even though Moses was a great servant, he was faithful in all his house, as Numbers told us. And as Hebrews reaffirms, the Lord Jesus is greater than Moses. Because he's not just a servant doing a job in the house. He's the builder of the house. He's the architect and the maker of the whole plan. And that's what we're looking for. Hebrews 11 will tell us. A city which hath foundations, whose builder and maker is God. Interesting though, the verse 6 says that, Christ as a son over his own house, whose house we are, if we hold fast the confidence and rejoicing the hope firm to the end. So again, there's that great blessing that we're involved in. We are the house of God. First Timothy 2, sorry, First Timothy 3:15 says that, if my, Paul says that if he delays in coming, that you may know how to conduct yourself in the house of God, which is the church of the living God, the pillar and ground of the truth. And we are that house. Ephesians 2 says, we're being built up, a habitation of God in the spirit. First Peter 2 views us as a holy temple being built under the Lord, that spiritual house. And of course, there's the idea in verse 6 of continuance, of holding fast the confidence and rejoicing with the hope firm to the end. That's what believers do. As Henry said it so well, believers believe. So if you're a believer, you're going to hold fast your confidence firm to the end. We'll find out though, and it's not just us believing by ourselves. We have that merciful and faithful high priest at the end of chapter two. And again, at the end of chapter four, we will meet our faithful high priest, who is able to strengthen us and give us everything we need in the testings and the assault of life. So it's interesting in this very challenging section of the word of God, that's going to talk about massive failure in history on the part of a large group of professing believers. And I mean the wilderness generation, the generation of the Exodus that came out of Egypt. And they singularly failed, with the exception of a very small remnant, Joshua and Caleb. And there's a comparison made now, not between the Lord Jesus and that generation, but between believers today and that generation. Obviously, originally, the Hebrew believers that this letter was written to. But it is equally an exhortation to us today, because we have to continue on and not replicate the mistakes of these of the past. Now, he cites the 95th Psalm, and he speaks about really a national catastrophe. There are certain things that happen in history that are so bad, you just need to say a name or a date, and everybody knows what you're talking about. So, the Alamo, okay? You remember the Alamo? If you don't, I'll play you the Johnny Cash song about it later, okay? Hey Sanaianna, we're killing your soldiers below, that men wherever they go may remember the Alamo. If any Mexican Americans are here, it's all fine now. We're all one country, okay? So don't worry about that. But no longer the independent republic of Texas. But any case, I could say to you, December 7, 1941. And people of a certain age here might say, oh jeez, that will live in infamy. Because of course, it's referring to the Pearl Harbor attack that ushered in our entrance into the Second World War. Or if I said 9/11, I don't have to define what 9/11 I mean. I mean the 9/11, hard to believe, almost 20 years ago now. When we came under attack by the terrorists of al Qaeda in a direct way in New York and Pennsylvania and Washington DC. And then of course, we could say, you know, other places that would make us think of disasters too. So, or even names of hurricanes like Katrina. You think of New Orleans and Louisiana, right? Well, when the Israelites thought of two places, Massa and Meribah, they thought of spiritual catastrophes. And really Psalm 95, which he's quoting here in Hebrews 3, is a commentary on the events of Massa and Meribah. Now in that chief of handouts that we gave you yesterday from brother Randy Amos, there's a page that talks about the 10 times that they had tested the Lord God. I won't go through each of them, but it would be interesting for you to go through and look at all those scriptures on your own time. And God said that, 10 times you've tested me, you know? This wasn't like, one day they made a mistake and God said, okay, that's it, you're not getting in the promised land. These people were regularly, serially disobedient. It was the character that they displayed, that they did not want to submit to the will of God. Rather, they hardened their hearts. So when he talks about the rebellion in verse 8, and the day of trial, this is the, and the testing rather, coming in verse 9. These are the septuagint's ways of describing what they would have known in Hebrew as Meribah and Massa. The times when they got out there in the wilderness and averred that God didn't care about them. For instance, Exodus 17, when they got out there and they said, what? No Coke machines? And they said, we're out here in a desert. We're going to die of thirst. What do we do? And we know as 1 Corinthians 10, we'll later comment, they drank of that rock which followed them, and that rock was Christ. So the Lord gave them water from the rock, and he satisfied their natural thirst all through the wilderness wanderings. But you remember, there was especially a particular testing that happened in Numbers 14, and that is Cadish Barnea. That's when they got literally to the edge of the promised land. They were on the border. They were on the east side of Jordan, in Moabite territory, what we would call today, the Hashemite kingdom of Jordan. And they were there, and they sent in 12 spies, you recall. And you know how the chorus tells us from Sunday School, 12 men went to spy on Canaan, 10 were bad and two were good? But what did they see when they spied on Canaan? Some saw giants great and tall, right? You remember that? But the 10 spies said, we can't go in there, because you know, the land is a land flowing with milk and honey. In other words, it's just as advertised. God wasn't exaggerating. This is indeed a land that is fecund, it is fertile, it is a beautiful spot for agrarian folks like us, who have herds and flocks and want a farm, perfect location. But there are giants in there, and you know about those tall guys? I mean, they'll just pulverize us. Compared to them, we're like bugs. You know, to them, we seem like grasshoppers, they said. And so we were in our own sight. Now, that always amuses me, because I think to myself, did one of these spies flag down a giant and say, excuse me, Mr. Giant, I'm taking a poll. How large do you think we look like? Oh, a grasshopper? Okay, let me write that down. I really don't think so. It was obviously their imagination. And it can be that way with our fears, you know? We turn on ABC, NBC, CBS, or if we're really spiritual, Fox News apparently. And that's sarcasm, in case anyone is missing it. And we hear about all the people out there that are dying, and we say, oh, I better just stay home, you know, where I'm safe. Well, guess what? In my neighborhood, trees, even this spring, have fallen on people's houses. Now thankfully, nobody was killed. But your house can blow up with a gas explosion. You can have a fire, you can have a tree. I'm not saying we don't use common sense and exercise what precautions we can to keep ourselves safe as we navigate a dangerous world, but you can be paralyzed by fear, can you? And yet we know how that can loom large in the imagination. That we say, well, if I go out, I'll surely get this, and it'll surely do this and that to me, and that I might die. And that can be what we think in our heads. Well, that's what these spies were doing. There were these giants, and we know they would just kill us. And it's not that we're cowards. It's really our children that we're concerned about. Now, if I had a dime for every time, maybe that's an exaggeration. But if every time that somebody had left our assembly through the years for the sake of their children had stayed, we'd have to build onto the chapel to hold our children's work. Okay, a lot of times people use their children as an excuse, and that's all it is, an excuse. And they said, oh, we can't go in there. Our children will get killed. And Caleb and Joshua looked at it differently. They said, let's go up and possess the land, for we're well able to take it. They are bread to us. God's promised it to us. He said he's going to fight for us. Deuteronomy gives us these promises that one of us will chase a thousand and so forth. We can go in and take them. We got this. But the people didn't believe, did they? Because this was just the culmination, the apex of four decades of persistent unbelief in God. Persistent questioning of God. Every time something got hard, were they hungry? Did they want meat? Oh, God brought us out here in the desert to kill us. Were there no graves in Egypt that we could be buried back there? Now they were awfully picky about where they wanted to die and how they wanted to die, okay? And they said, you know, it would have been better back in Egypt. We remember back in Egypt, we used to have those great Montez catered barbecues, you know? Papusas, leeks, onions, garlics, the whole thing. We added fantastic back there in Egypt. Really? I mean, it seems to me, the book of Exodus said, that you cried out to the Lord, and the Lord here heard your cry of suffering. This is what we call revisionist history, where they're going back and they're kind of changing things, you know? And they're taking a different view of how it really was. And they said, let's make us a captain and go back to Egypt. Now at that point, what was that? Was that believers falling into a temporary lack of faith, or believers temporarily denying the Lord like Peter did? We heard of how under pressure, Peter denied the Lord. By the way, the high priest, the Lord Jesus, predicted that denial. Told Peter he would deny the Lord, but he also told him he would restore. And the Lord did indeed restore Peter. And Peter, just like the Lord told him in Luke 22, would have a ministry of strengthening his brethren. It's the two epistles of Peter that we have in our Bibles, not to mention the ministry he exercised as recorded in the book of Acts. So yes, if we had looked at Peter on that night, we might have said, oh, he was a false believer, but God knew otherwise. Is that what was happening here though? No, this was a personal rejection of God, saying, you know what? This whole thing was a mistake. We want to hit the reset button. We want a do-over. For you golfers, we want a mulligan. We want to go back and start over again. Let's just go back to Egypt and call the whole thing off. Which is kind of my modern colloquial paraphrase of Numbers 14 and what they did. But God said, they are not going to enter into my rest. So, he said verse 10, therefore I was angry. By the way, he uses two words in verse 9. He says, where your fathers tested me and tried me. And one Greek scholar, I thought, put it well. He said that this first word for tested, sorry, the second word for tried me, he said, is the word that describes the attitude that is the opposite of radical faith, which can be displayed in response to the word of God. While faith trusts the promises of God, even in spite of all appearances. And he says, compare Hebrews 11. He says, unbelief responds with distrust and doubt, that demands proof and certainty before it will entrust itself to the promise of God. I thought that was good. It demands proof and certainty before it will entrust itself to the promise of God. Show us that you can take us to the promised land, and then we'll believe you. What do you mean? You saw God bring the mightiest superpower in the world to its knees. What more proof do you guys need? But they persistently kept testing the Lord. Sort of like if we could get my old friend LeBron James out here to the Pine Bush basketball court. And maybe John Jackson could swing that. He's got some juice with these athlete people. But anyway, if I could get LeBron James out there and give him a basketball and say, now LeBron, I bet you can't dunk on this rim here at Pine Bush. So LeBron goes and dunks, after he finishes laughing at me. He goes and dunks, you know? I bet you can't do it again. He goes and dunks. Thirty-two dunks later, I bet you can't do it again. Well, now he's starting to break a little sweat. He's getting tired, but he dunks again. I bet you can't do it the 34th time, or the 100th time, or the 172th. I mean, how many times would the guy have to dunk till he's established it, right? Same thing with this generation in Israel. It wasn't like God was saying, just take my word for it, I'll take you in. They had seen the signs and wonders. They had ample evidence of the power of God. And he says of them, therefore, verse 10, I was angry with that generation and said, they always go astray in their heart, and they have not known my ways. So I swear my wrath, they shall not enter my rest. Now, here comes the warning, verse 12. Beware brethren, lest there be in any of you. So that language implies not the whole group. Not that I think the majority of you are in this situation, but there might be somebody among you. There might be one or two of you, there might be somebody who has an evil heart of unbelief in departing from the living God. But exhore one another daily while it is called today, lest of any of you be hardened through the deceitfulness of sin. For we've become partakers of Christ, if we hold the beginning of our confidence steadfast to the end. While it is said, today if you'll hear his voice, do not harden your hearts as in the rebellion. So keep on believing. It's not a fruitless belief. It is worthwhile. Believe on the Lord Jesus. Remember who he is. Remember that he's the same yesterday, today, and forever. Remember, he's our great high priest. He's going to tell them in chapter seven, the one whoever lives to make intercession for us. He's praying us all the way home. How could Peter know that when he denied the Lord, that it was possible to be restored? And that he would be restored? Because the high priest told him so. And the Lord is praying for us, that our faith fail not, just like he prayed for Peter, if we know the Lord. But if you're one of those still on the fence, listen to the body of believers around you and believe on the Lord Jesus. Put your faith in him, and hold fast your confidence steadfast in the end. For he says, verse 16, for who having heard rebelled. Indeed, was it not all who came out of Egypt led by Moses? Now with whom was he angry forty years? Was it not with those who sinned, whose corpses fell in the wilderness? And to whom did he swear, that they would not enter his rest, but to those who did not obey? I mentioned this the other day, but obedience and unbelief are linked, okay? Let's just look at a couple cross-references in the spirit of our brother Ryan, to once again establish this. We're going to go to John 3:36. John 3:36. And I'm going to switch to the English Revised Version of 1881. But if you're reading like the ESV, or the NAS, or many other translations, they would be similar to this. John 3:36, he that believeth on the Son hath eternal life. But he that obeyeth not the Son shall not see life, but the wrath of God abideth on him. So you see, there's a parallelism there, that when he's talking about belief, we're talking about obedience. Because belief is not merely something we ascend to mentally, or something we know to be a historical fact. The demons know in that sense. The demons believe in that sense. That's what James tells us, don't they? You believe there's one God, you do well. The demons also believe and tremble. So they're good theologians in that sense. They know who the true God is. Whenever a demon met the Lord Jesus on earth, they said, we know who you are, the Holy One of God. They're even good dispensational scholars, because they said, have you come to torment us before the time? So they know eschatology. They know future judgment, more than some so-called Christian theologians would be able to say. But you see, belief and obedience are linked. Look again at Acts 17. I think it's verse 30, but wait till I get there. Acts, chapter 17, verse 30. Truly the times of these ignorance, God, the times of, these times of ignorance, God overlooked. But notice this phrase, but now commands all men everywhere to repent, okay? So, the Lord doesn't ask us merely to believe, he commands us to believe. And if we are disbelieving what the Lord has told us, guess what? We are in rebellion against God, whether we want to admit that or not. So these thoughts, and there's other cross-references that could be added. But these thoughts show us that faith and obedience are parallel descriptions of the same thing. The one who believes on the Lord is obeying his command to believe on the Lord Jesus Christ. And the one who obeys the Lord, of course, is the believer who believes in the Lord. Now, he says it back in Hebrews 3:19. So we see that they could not enter in because of unbelief. So this is the opposite of faith. In fact, in Greek, it's just one of the words for faith with an alpha in front of it, which makes it negative, which makes it the opposite of it. So it's the opposite of faith. It's unbelief. The opposite of belief is unbelief. They couldn't enter in because of unbelief. So, the problem with this generation was not merely being a little wayward, or backsliding a little bit. Their problem was that they didn't really believe on the Lord in the saving sense of that term. And every time it got rough for them, they showed that. Because they not only murmured and complained, they questioned the goodness of God. They questioned the love of God. And they said, what kind of a God are you anyway, that you'd bring us out here to kill us? Now, they were basically saying that God was a sadist. That God is someone who likes to torture people. That he likes to play with people and mess with them, and treat them like pawns, and just give them the worst life possible. Well, that's what a lot of critics of the gospel and of the Bible say our God is like, but we know God's not like that, is he? God was with them, burying them on eagles' wings, he said. Their delay in the wilderness wasn't because of any reticence on God's part to bring them in and give them the land. God was all ready to do it. It was they who by unbelief removed themselves from that blessing of the land. And then you notice what happened in Numbers 14 as well, that after God swore to them, you're not going to enter into my rest, and by the way, the children whom you used for your excuse and said, oh, we can't go in because of our children, well, I'm going to bring them in, once you all are dead. I'm going to wait till you die, and I'm going to bring those children in to show I care about those children, and I'm going to fulfill my promise. So then they said, oh, well, in light of that, let's have a go at it. Come on, guys. Put on your armor, get out the old swords, sharpen them up, let's have a little pep rally. Ra ra ra, go Israel, and we'll go up and attack them. And Moses said, don't do it. The Lord isn't among you. And they went up and did it, and what happened? They got routed abysmally, driven back out. And precisely what God had condemned them to occur. Their bodies became, as we just read in Hebrews 3, corpses in the wilderness. And God brought their children in a generation later. So, we see these were people that as chapter six is going to tell us, there is a certain type of person that it's impossible to renew to repentance. Why is it impossible to renew them? Because God is unwilling to save? No, we're told in the Bible explicitly, that God wants all men to be saved and to come to acknowledge the truth. That God wants everyone to repent. The scriptures say that explicitly, over and over again in different ways. It is because this person, no matter what is presented to them, no matter what evidence, they are adamantly and obdurately going to refuse to repent. They're not going to turn, no matter what happens in their life, or what they see, or what God tells them through his word. They've had the fullest amount of light possible. Everything they required to believe, and they've turned away from it. By the way, I think McCleod's right in his Amais course on Hebrews, when he says that the warning passages ought to be taken as a group. I think that really helps us in seeing the picture that's being presented. And again, we remember this is a mixed audience. So not everybody, as he's saying, is not going to enter into God's rest. But certainly, some of them weren't going to enter in, or were in danger of not entering in, if they disbelieved in the Lord. But if they were a believer, no question, they're going to continue, they're going to enter into the rest. Which brings us into chapter four, which is going to emphasize that positive side. Although even there, we have some warnings about the wilderness generation and what happened with them. At this point, I'd like to pause and give opportunity to Henry, because as I told him, I feel very weak on chapter four. I don't feel like I have as good a handle on it as I'd like to. I could muddle through if you were stuck with me. But since the Lord has brought Henry here, I think it would be foolish for me to try to wing it, even though I've studied a lot, but I just don't have the understanding that I want yet. So we're going to throw the ball over to, this is in wrestling, tag team, you know? So picture yourself in the steel cage match. Here comes the ultimate Cuban warrior. So picture yourself in the steel cage match, here comes the ultimate Cuban warrior.
Obviously, this is complicated. So. Part of the problem is how much time do you spend on the passage before you move onward? In my estimation, this all ties back to chapter three. And where I basically left off about the Lord Jesus, verse six, it says, but Christ has a son over his own house. And then it goes on, that's God's house, over against the contrast of Moses, who was a servant for that future. The house of God that's being built. And now it says, Moses was faithful in all his house as a servant, verse five, for a testimony of those things which were to be spoken after. That's a tremendous thing. And this area, which has a lot to do with Numbers fourteen. We're in agreement there, which is when the nation that was brought out of Egypt came to the promised land and refused to go in. They refused to enter into their rest. That has to do, that rest with the rest that God would have brought them into. Had they, in Numbers fourteen, when they came to Kadesh Barnea, would have believed that God would have given them the land, then it wouldn't have been a question of their ability to fight these giants, how big they are, and you remember how Joshua and Caleb protested? And their protest was, if God delights in us, he will give it to us. So it all has to do with our ability to rest in what someone else will do for us, okay? So that's a very important principle, and so it goes on to say that Moses was faithful. Well, what is it to save the nation of Israel in Numbers fourteen, when they rebelled against the Lord and refused to enter his rest? But what saved the nation was Moses' intercession, you see? And that Moses that they had grumbled against, that they complained against, even then he was still interceding for these people. And he's saying, listen, God, if you destroy these people, what will the heathens say? What will the Egyptians say? You brought them out, but you couldn't bring them in, say. And so you destroyed them in the wilderness, God's glory is not just in bringing us out. It's bringing us in, our final and ultimate salvation and inheritance, you see? And so it was with Israel, and so what we have to understand is that when Moses preached the gospel to the nation of Israel, and you can read about this in Exodus, chapter six. And the gospel wasn't just that God was going to bring them out. The gospel was, God is gonna bring you out in order to bring you into a great inheritance, a promised land. And he will be your God, and you will be his people. Now, part of the problem is, well, who wants to be a slave in Egypt? Say, and as far as a message that says, hey, God's willing to get you out of Egypt, a lot of people say, I want that. And this is part of the problem, isn't it, with a lot of preaching and a lot of presenting the gospel in that banner of, are you sad and lonely? See, Christ will give you companionship, and there's a truth to that, isn't there? But it isn't just that the Lord Jesus is here to get us out of the Egypt of our troubles and our problems and living in a fallen world, and the problems that we have in our marriages and with finances and with our anger that gets us into such deep feces, you see? And we all want deliverance from it, don't we? We all want, who wants to be a better father? Who wants to be a better husband? Who wants to be better with his finances? I mean, you know, you have to be stupid not to want this, there's no magic wand here.
I think they're all saved.
Yeah, yeah. And so the problem was that the gospel wasn't just two parts. The gospel wasn't a part that said, God will bring you out. The gospel was, the God who brings you out is a God who will bring you in.
Amen.
And when they had the gospel preached to them, it'll tell you here in chapter four, in the warning, verse two, for unto us, that's these Hebrew believers, you see? For unto us was the gospel preached, as well as unto them, the them was the nation that Moses preached to in Egypt, you see? But the word preached did not profit them, why? It wasn't mixed with faith in them that heard it. And so what it was is that there were people that came out of Egypt, you see? But they didn't come out of Egypt because they believed the gospel. They came out of Egypt for all kinds of different reasons, but not because they believed the gospel. Now, at what point do we, in reading the Old Testament, realize that they never believed the gospel? It's in Numbers fourteen, and let's go there for a minute, you see? And in Numbers fourteen. The spies have come back, remember? And the spies, they. Verse twenty-five, chapter thirteen, and they returned from searching of the land after forty days. And they went and came to Moses and Aaron, to all the congregation of the children of Israel, unto the wilderness of Paran, to Kadesh, and brought back word unto them and unto all the congregation, and showed them the fruit of the land. Why is that important? We've been saying that faith is based on evidence, faith isn't blind faith. God's not asking you to believe blindly, now, there's something that needs to be said there. And I hope I'm not getting off here. John specifically says, these things are written that you may know that Jesus is the Christ, the Son of God, and that believing you might have life in his name. The point is this, faith is never blind. God never asks you or me to believe blindly, if he did, you're no different than a Muslim, you're no different than anybody else, in that sense. You're believing wishful made-up fairy tales, okay? The faith of our Lord Jesus is established and rooted in human history, historical evidence, prophetic evidence, scriptural evidence. But once, the signs, the greatest being, the resurrection of the Lord Jesus from the dead. By the way, that's the greatest prophecy he ever made, he made it to his contemporaries. It wasn't a prophecy to be fulfilled in a hundred years, no, 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 it was a prophecy for the very ones, they were gonna kill him. And he said to them, destroy this temple, and in three days, I will raise it again. That was a prophecy, it was fulfilled right in their hearing and experience and right in their faces. What's the point? Our Christian faith is built on evidence, here are the evidences. Now, based on the evidences, you make a moral determination. It's a personal choice, you either believe or you, you don't believe. Now, what God, and at the final judgment, in Matthew eleven and twelve is filled with what, how the Lord dealt with those who said, we have excuses not to believe, and the Lord exposed all their excuses as what? Perversion, they were lies, they weren't real, you see? And so, no, God will never let anyone go into hell thinking, I'm going into hell because I didn't have enough evidence to believe, but God will never allow that, you see? He'll make it very plain, so the point being that now you have the evidence. And if on that evidence, now you, with your eyes on the evidence, you make your decision to believe on the Lord Jesus Christ and be saved from that moment on. It's what Keith was saying earlier, you can't ask him to prove himself. You can't now treat him and say, well, now if I like what you're doing in my life, I'll follow you. At that point, when you choose to believe, you're believing what? That he is what? The Son of God, and if he's the Son of God, you can't question where he leads you. From that moment on, you must follow where? Wherever he leads you. You can't treat him as if he was a human being that might lie to you. You can't treat him as a human being who can only give you opinions of what you should do, but he might be wrong. No, faith is based on evidence, but once you commit to putting your trust in him as Son of God, from that moment on, he's Lord of all, and you must follow whithersoever he leads you. Amen, do we, you understand that connection? That is true with Abraham, our father. The God of glory appeared to our father Abraham. Once the God of glory appeared to him, and Abraham said, you are the God of glory. From that moment on, Abraham followed him, not what? Not knowing where he went, that's very important. So here's the issue. They brought back the evidence, and now the evidence authenticated God's promise concerning that land, that it was a land flowing with milk and honey. Verse twenty-eight, nevertheless, the people be strong that dwell in the land. And the cities are walled and very great, and moreover, we saw the children of Anak there. The Amalekites dwell there, you know, and now the people start getting restless, verse thirty. And Caleb still the people before Moses said, let us go up at once and possess it. For we are well able to overcome it. The men that went up with him said, we be not able to go up against the people, for they are strong. So now it became a matter of their ability, you see, to enter the land by their strength, by their works. And so it says, and they brought up, verse thirty-two, an evil reporter of the land which they had searched the children of Israel, saying, the land through which we have gone to search it is a land that eateth up the inhabitants thereof. And all the people that we saw in it are men of great stature, and there, we saw the giants, the sons of Anak, which come out of the giants, and we were in our own sight. Self-esteem, self-ability, as grasshoppers. And that's what we were in their sight. How different that was than Rahab later, huh? When it came to Israel and Joshua and those walled cities, and she was in one of those walled cities, what did she say? We've heard, and the people of Geroboam heard, what the Lord your God did to Pharaoh. What he did to them, and the whole of them trembled, you see? So then, at this point, verse one, chapter fourteen, and all the congregation lifted up their voice and cried, and the people wept that night. Oh, what a mess, I mean, I can't do this, I can't do this, what am I gonna do, what am I gonna do? What are you gonna do? Trust God, that's what you, that's the issue, isn't it? Believe, isn't it? Believe, didn't you have the gospel preached unto you? Didn't God, the living God who sent Moses, say he'd bring you out of Egypt to bring you into this land? What's the answer to that? Yes, well then, didn't you say you believed it? Well, did you believe it? If you believed it, you would enter into his rest. You'd enter into what he will do for you, see? And that he that enters into his rest ceases from his own works. So at this point, again, verse two of chapter fourteen, all the children of Israel murmured against Moses and against Aaron, et cetera, et cetera. And watch what they said, would God that we had died in the land of Egypt, or would God we had died in this place? I mean, I'm just saying, the horror of the human heart, the hypocrisy of our flesh, the human heart. How many times did they complain in the wilderness, saying, God brought us up to kill us in the wilderness? We can't stand it, why'd you bring us to this wilderness to kill us? And now they're saying, wish we had died in the wilderness, I thought you didn't want to die in the wilderness. I mean, it's just horrible, you see? Human nature, fallen, unregenerate, raw, wicked, human nature, and unredeemed, see? Faithless, unbelieving, beware, less than evil heart of unbelieving, see? Is still present inside you. And so, back to Hebrews three, we are his house, whose house we are. If we hold the beginning of our confidence steadfast to the, to the end. In other words, and here we go again, oh, thank God that the moment we genuinely repent and believe, at that moment we are justified. By his grace. But the evidence that you believed then is that you believe today. I mean, if you really believed it at the beginning, you know what the scripture says? You're gonna believe it now, and you're gonna believe it tomorrow. And not only you're gonna believe it tomorrow, you're gonna believe it all the way to the end. You'll never stop believing it before you get to heaven, and if you stop believing it before you get to heaven, guess what you are? An unbeliever, and it wasn't that you were a believer and then you, well, decided, I'm not gonna be a believer anymore, no, 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 you never were a believer. And therein comes the whole issue of the high priesthood of Jesus Christ, you see? What is the thrust to the Hebrew Christians? Listen, those who have genuinely believed in this one, that God made the captain of our salvation, that God provided to be our great high priest, who himself has suffered in bringing many sons to glory and knows what it costs to get to glory from a fallen world. He was so qualified to sucker those who are on that journey, where he will lead them. And he's the great high priest that God has provided to see to it, that his intercessions will preserve your faith. And Satan will never able to get at that faith, will never be able to break that faith, even if you suffer what a brother like Wilbur has suffered. And I'm sure you know what suffering is. Thank God we have a great high priest. That after the power of an endless life, ceases never to intercede for us. And cease to it like he did with Peter on that night, he knew Peter would deny him, he knew Peter, his cowardice would come out, his feminine streak would overwhelm him. And he would crumble before a little maiden. And he said to him, Peter, Satan has desired to have you, that's Satan's work. The destruction of faith, wherever it exists, or the activity to prevent faith from ever beginning. You can read about it in the parable of the sore, as described in Luke, chapter eight, say. That's what he does, but thank God for the Lord Jesus who said to Satan, Satan, I mean, said to Satan, said to Peter, Satan has desired to have you, that he might sift you as wheat. But I have prayed for you. And when it says there, you, it was for Peter specifically and all the rest, but for Peter specifically, I have prayed for thee, Peter. That your what? Faith fail not. Everything failed, his courage failed, his testimony failed, his language failed, his behavior failed. But I tell you, when that cock crewed, that moment that cock crewed, Peter's faith was stronger than it had ever been. And it had ever been, because the Lord Jesus didn't say, Peter, I have prayed for you. Say, that your faith fail not. And if it doesn't fail, then strengthen your brethren, no, 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 no. I have prayed for you, that your faith fail not, and when you're converted. In other words, converted in that sense. Of the wondrous keeping, saving power of our great. of our great high priest. You strengthen your brethren. So here we are. How can you be sure, how can I be sure that I am going to believe to the end? Because I have great faith? Because I'm such a good believer? Because I'm not a coward like the rest of you, Lord, the all right, forsake you? I'm not gonna be a little fairy like these sissies are? That's what Peter said that night. That's exactly what he said, man. And you know, that kind of self-confidence and self-righteousness, and look at my faith and how good my faith is, it turns people into monsters, doesn't it?
Amen.
As far as their estimation of others, you know? What's my confidence that I'm gonna make it to the end? It's whom I've put my faith in. The one who promised me that if I trust him, he forever lives and will live to intercede for me, so that my faith can never be broken. And therefore, he is able to save me to the utter. Oh, thank God for that. It's rest. Entering in the rest. Entering into that Sabbath, you see, of what someone else does, is, and does for us. Yes? I hope I didn't, you know, confuse this whole thing. So, we are made partakers of his house, whose house we are. If we hold the beginning of our confidence steadfast to the to the end. And that's where in Numbers fourteen, Israel manifested by their refusal to trust God to bring them into the land and give them the land. See? That they had never, ever believed the gospel. Does that make sense? Yeah? Okay, so, uh, this again, it's eight o'clock and we've got to stop, but this, there's a lot more to say about all this, okay? And again, what is eternal security? And who is it that has eternal security? Everybody answer, everybody knows the answer. Who has eternal? Huh? Believers do, you know? You know, that kind of eternal security that says, you know, uh, he believed once in his life, but you know, you talk to him now, he don't believe anymore, but he saved because once saved. Always say, that, that stuff is sketchy, isn't it? What does the believer do? He believes. And what do believers that are genuine believers do? They go on believing. And how come they go on believing? Because they have such a great high priest. You say? Who forever lives to make intercession for them and save them to the uttermost. Okay, uh, can I go five minutes over here? Do you mind that? Th- th- this is kind of important, because you'll find, what is this nation then? You know, and so here, here they are, and you know, they're, they're, they're feeling sorry, but what are we gonna do, what are we gonna do, what are we gonna do? And then you'll notice again. Uh, uh, they, they, they wanna go, they wanna go back to Egypt, better for us if we go back to Egypt now, now. Uh, notice what they said, verse four. And they said one to another, let us make a captain. Ooh, we need, we have a captain. Where's he taking him? Taking us to glory, taking you back to Egypt. Let us, uh, make a captain and let us return to Egypt. Wow. That's bad stuff, you see? And so, uh, as all this is going on, uh, then Moses and Aaron fell on their faces and not, verse six, chapter four, and Joshua, the son of Nun, and Caleb, they get up, verse seven, they spake unto all the people, saying, the land which we pass through to search it is an exceeding good land. Now watch the key, verse eight, if the Lord delight in us. What are your thoughts of God? What do you believe about God? And we get back to the point, don't we? Any interpretation, definition that we form, conclusion that we come to about what God is like without the Son is is false. How do you know God delights in you? Well, I'll tell you how the apostle says it. If while you were enemies, he spared not his own son. How shall he not also with him freely give you everything? If God before us, who can be again? Do you believe God's for you? What's the basis that you believe that God's for you? He gave his son, and he spared not his son. But God demonstrates his love for us in that while we were still sinner. What did God do for you then? Christ died for you. That's faith, isn't it? Calvary. God is for us. It's very important to contemplate in Genesis, chapter three. Because back in Genesis, chapter three, how many human beings were there? How relatively easy it would have been to just kill two of them. He didn't, you know? He gave them coats of skins by which they could learn to live as sinful people would sin against God and experience the fact that God hates sin, but he doesn't hate the sinner.
Amen.
And even though we've sinned, God is still for us. That's Genesis three. If God wasn't for mankind, it would have been all over then. Not now. Billions of them all over the place, you see? Oh, God, help us. If God delight in us, then he will bring us into this land and give it to us. That's Joshua and Caleb. Why did they say that? Because they believed the gospel that was preached to them. Amen? All right, so now notice the Lord's estimation of this people. First of all, uh, they plead with the people, verse nine, only rebel not ye against the Lord. What he said, to not believe God's word is to it's, it's an affront. It's an open rebellion against the Lord. There's the evidence, you see? The evidence is there, the gospel was preached. Yet rebel not against the Lord. Verse ten, but all the congregation bade stone them with stones. Wow. That's what they wanted to do. The Lord responded, verse eleven, and the Lord said unto Moses, how long will this people provoke me? The word therefore provoked me is defy me. And how long will it be ere they? Numbers fourteen, ten. Eleven, I'm sorry. How long will it be before they? What? Believe me. What more do I have to do? Look what he says, for all the signs which have showed among them. In other words, what more could God, this is Hebrews six stuff. This is, this is all Hebrews six stuff. If after God shows you everything, shows you the person of Christ, the spirit of God illuminates your mind, the spirit of God brings you to eyes wide open to see that that was none other than the Son of God crucified. And, 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 and now with eyes wide open, you profess to believe him, but then when the going gets rough, you sit there and say, I ain't going anymore. What else can God do? To convince you to believe? He's got nothing else to give you. He's already given his son. God himself now, why is it impossible to lead them and bring them again to repentant? Because God used the death of his son and the Holy Spirit to show them it was his son that he gave for them to get them to believe in God, that God is for us. And if, if that provoked a profession only outwardly, but not a conversion of heart. And because there was not a conversion of heart, and now having been given that evidence, they willfully turn away. It's impossible to bring them again to change their mind. Because God's already done everything and showed them everything by which he could actually change a human being's mind and get that human being to convert and believe on the Lord Jesus Christ, the Son of God. Does that make sense? Okay, I mean, so here they are again, how long after all the sight? The, well, before they believe me, and then now God says, verse off, I will smite them with the pestilence and disinherit them, and will make of thee a greater nation and mightier than they. And Moses said unto the Lord, then the Egyptians shall hear it, for thou broughtest up this people in thy might from among them. And they, da, 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 verse fifteen, now if thou shalt kill all these people as one man, then the nations which have heard the fame of thee will speak, saying, verse sixteen, this happened because the Lord was not able to bring this people into the land which he swore unto them. I tell you, the Lord Jesus is coming for us. He must come for us. He staked his deity on it. You believe in God, believe also in me. In my Father's house are many dwelling places. If it were not so, I would have told you, and I go to prepare a place for you, and if I go? No. No, as God is God, and you say you believe in God, believe in me as God. I am coming again, that where I am, there you might be also. Brethren, he's going to bring us in. Blessed be his name. Okay, so then, at this point, in Numbers fourteen, as you look at the whole thing, uh, notice again, God's assessment of this people, and, uh, look at verse twenty seven. Uh, how long shall I bear with this evil congregation which murmur against me? Okay, uh, and finally, uh, because they refused to go into the land, say unto them, verse twenty eight, as I truly as I live, say it the Lord, as he hath spoken in mine ear, so I will speak in your ears. Your carcasses shall fall in this wilderness, and all that were numbered of you, according to your whole number, from twenty years old and upward, which have murmured against me with eyes wide open. Uh, uh, doubtless, ye shall not come into the land concerning which I swear to make you dwell therein, say Caleb and Joshua. But, verse thirty one, your little ones, the ones that was twenty years and younger. At the time that they left Egypt, say, the little ones that you said would be destroyed if you attempted to enter the land, those little ones. I'm gonna bring them in. It was never on the basis of their works or their ability. Verse thirty one, but your little ones which he said should be a prey, then will I bring in, and they shall know the land which you have despised. But you will die in the wilderness and go on, you know, and then he said, verse fifty, thirty five, as I, the Lord, had said, I will surely do it unto all this evil congregation, watch the description of them, that are gathered together against me. See? And, and that's what happens to man, man wanting to get rid of God. That's if man can destroy God. It's crazy, destroy Moses, the apostle and high priest of their profession. But what's the point here in Numbers fourteen, that when the people then hear this? Okay? That God now told them, you're not going into the land, turn around and go into the wilderness. That's what those people did. That didn't believe God would give them the land and bring them to the land. What'd they do? Verse forty. And they rose up early in the morning and got them up into the top of the mountain, saying, lo, we be here and will go up unto the place which the Lord hath promised. For we have sinned. And Moses pleaded with them, and said to these people, verse forty one, why do you now transgress the commandment of the Lord? What the Lord said? You didn't believe in my love? You didn't believe in my grace? Then now you're gonna experience my judgment. Go back into the wilderness. You're not coming in. And now they didn't believe the judgment of God. And now, uh, Moses pleased with them, why, why, why are you doing this? Verse forty three, don't go up, for the Lord is not among you, you're gonna be smitten of your enemy. And you're gonna fall by the way of the sword. But yet, verse forty four, but they presumed arrogance, pride. They presumed to go up anyway. Even though the ark of the covenant of the Lord, or Moses did not go with them. And they attempted to go into the land that they wouldn't believe God would give them by their own strength. You, you explain that logic to me. What's the point? Well, the Lord Jesus and later deals with it. And he speaks of it in Matthew, chapter. Let's go there for a moment, eleven, please. It's back to this issue of people didn't believe John the Baptist. What was John the Baptist's message? Judgment. What was the message of the Lord Jesus? Forgiveness and love. And so, now the Lord's dealing with these, well, what did you go out into the wilderness to see? A prophet. You thought there was a prophet, and you went out, and, and originally, immediately, you were moved because there was a prophet, and, and you got baptized. Well, if you got baptized by John, well, why haven't you believed in me? He told you to believe in me. That's what you went out there to hear, the prophet that said, that after him would come the one that can baptize with the Holy Spirit to save you. Why, why did?
Well, he had a demon.
Oh. So then you covered under the excuse that John the Baptist was a Yahud and had a demon, and you wouldn't believe him. And you didn't like the harshness of his message, you know, get back into the wilderness, you're gonna die from believing. And now I came eating and drinking, showing love to hurting people, the sinners. And you rose up and said, you don't believe in my love. You don't believe in that kind of forgiveness. You don't believe God is like that either. You don't believe God is like John the Baptist said, that he's going to execute his judgment. And then you also don't believe that God loves sinners. And you say, I'm a drunkard and I'm a glutton. Interesting. And the Lord Jesus says, verse sixteen, Matthew eleven. But whereunto shall I like in this generation? It is like unto children sitting in the markets and calling unto their fellows and saying, we have piped unto you, and you have not danced. So we mourned unto you, you didn't wanna dance? Well, then we, we mourned unto you, but you wouldn't we? For John came neither eating nor drinking, and you say he has a devil. And the son of man came eating and drinking, and you say, behold, a man gluttonous and a wine-bipper, a friend of publicans and sinners. But wisdom is justified of her children. I qualify, my friend, by the grace of God. How do I qualify? I believe in God's wrath. Do you believe in God's wrath? But I also believe in God's mercy. And because I believe in God's wrath, I've run for refuge to lay hold on him who has gone in within the veil for me. The anchor of my soul, sure and steadfast. The wisdom of God. The children of that wisdom are those who reconcile the wonder of the wrath of God and the love of God. For God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son, that whosoever believeth in him should not perish, but have everlasting. Amen? I better stop there. Uh, I don't know if there's any comment, but entering into rest, entering into his rest, that's the background of the Sabbath. Okay? And what was the Sabbath about? Learning to trust the other in what he will do for you. On the seventh day, don't go out there and gather. It's not my work, it's God who's feeding me, who's feeding you. And even in our Christian service, and even in my Christian walk, it's not how good I perform that gives me a sense of acceptance with God. No, 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 no. It's based on what Jesus Christ has done for me. So, how can we read Hebrews four and not, and I'll just read it without comment, and not think of these words of the Lord Jesus, who stood on this planet to a, a, a people that were not in their rest. not in their rest, and said unto them, "Come unto me, all ye that labor and are heavy laden, and I will give you rest. Take my yoke upon you, and learn of me; for I am meek and lowly in heart, and you shall find rest unto your soul; for my yoke is easy, and my burden is not." Blessed be the name of our Lord Jesus Christ.